I am calling the meeting to order. The first agenda item is recognition.
Great, thanks Chris.
Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
So this evening we have a special recognition. We have Jerry Lavalley with us. Jerry is a special education paraprofessional at Squadron Line School. And Jerry has been named the State Para-educator of the Year. So I know she's received the accolade of the District Para-educator of the Year. We nominated her at the state level. Jerry does just an incredible job for our school district and has changed the lives of kids. And I know Helen, I'm going to kick this to Helen, is going to give some background on Jerry, but it's wonderful to see you here. I participated in the honorary baked potato day at Squadron Line. They got rid of the baked potato a few years ago, but brought it back for one day for Jerry, and I went over and had a potato.
And I got the graham cheese.
And saw Jerry. So congratulations. We're very lucky to have you. And Helen.
Thank you. Well, this evening I'm very pleased to present Jerry Lavalley to the Board of Education members and as well as to our audience. Jerry is Connecticut's very first paraprofessional, Para-educator of the Year. This award, Connecticut's 2015 Anne Murphy, Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator of the Year, is an award that is twofold. It's an award that's meant to really honor the memory of Anne Marie Murphy, who was a dedicated paraprofessional at Sandy Hook, who lost her life in that school tragedy. And in recognition of her skills and her dedication, the state, in collaboration with the state's Paraprofessional Advisory Board, developed this honor, similar to our Connecticut State Teacher of the Year process, very similar. So late in, I would say, late in the winter of last year, we received, each district received a notice from the state about the process. There was no real design around the process. Each district was asked to develop their own. I would like to recognize Step Service, who really supported our staff in developing a protocol to use in this process. And every principal was involved, administrators, paraprofessionals served on the team. And we had a really terrific process in trying to put a person forward. So come June, Jerry rose to the top. We submitted her name to the state, and lo and behold, in September, we were informed that Jerry was, in fact, the State Para-educator of the Year. So we really have spent a lot of time celebrating in a number of different forms. But next week, we will sort of culminate everything at the state's annual Paraprofessional Conference in Cromwell. So the evening of November 6th will be dedicated to again recognizing Jerry's talents. She's been a para-educator with us for 18 years, serving at both Tooten and Squadron Line Schools. And we really value her work and her dedication. I think we can't, Matt and I were talking today, we can't find anyone more positive than Jerry. And that really is her work ethic. And she truly believes that every child is a gift, a gift to all of us. And she works very hard to ensure that they meet a high level of success. So thanks for making everybody shine at Squadron Line. We appreciate that. And you do really make a difference. So join me in congratulating.
Jerry, you want to say anything?
Thank you very much. And I will do my very best to represent Simsberry as part of the, let's see, what is it, School Paraprofessional Advisory Council.
Right.
I will be attending four meetings throughout the course of the year. And hopefully I'll impact that group as well.
Thank you.
We won't make you sing. Jerry sings to the.
Yes, she does. She sings every day. She sings every day.
So we won't, we won't go.
You really don't want to do that.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Jerry, I just want to add, I think we all on the board recognize that to get the affirmation of your own community is significant enough, but within the entire state, to get the endorsement of the state is pretty spectacular. And we all know how competitive that is. And so what a great statement about you that that is. So thank you very much for all of your efforts, so.
Thank you.
Goodbye. With that said, let's move to public audience. Anyone in the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to Board and Administrative Communications. And Brian, anything?
So the first quarter is ending in about three days at Simsberry High School. Especially for the seniors, this is a stressful time, like November 1st is early action, early decision deadlines. But a little bit of silver lining for everyone, last week we had a very successful spirit week, a lot of positive displays of school spirit and camaraderie. And even if everyone's going to be pulling their hair out, you know, before Saturday, everyone is going to have that balanced out by a really positive leader school spirit.
Thank you, Brian. Susan?
I just wanted to mention that last night, we started our work at the leadership team at the high school. So Erin's on that with me, and Neil leads us. And our work this year is going to be looking at the grade point average system at the high school.
All right.
So I'll keep you posted as we move along.
Very good. Todd?
Mike?
Okay. I'll just do an update on the Curriculum Committee, which met last Friday. There were three topics that we discussed, and we'll be hearing more about at least one of those tonight. The first is that Simsberry has been distinguished by the College Board to be one of 220 schools in the United States invited to participate in the beginning of an AP Capstone program. And this would really have two parts to it. The first part would be students that would come together based upon a very specific area of, A, deep study, but B, very much cross-curricular study, that would be identified by the school. And I think we're going to hear Neil talk a little bit more about this tonight. And then the second part of it is a second year that would be available for, our thought is seniors that want to come together and do very deep research on individual projects on their own, working in collaboration on the process with other individuals. So it's really nice that we were invited to it. And again, we'll get an update from Neil on that. The second thing we looked at was, had the opportunity to go in and take a look at a computer science class, which was pretty inspirational with some of the apps that the students were coming up with. The one that really stood out to me that Erin was talking about was, for someone who's feeling low, what was the title of the app?
It was a happy app.
A happy app.
That was great.
So if you're feeling low, you hit it in either your favorite song, or a picture of your, one of your favorite vacation places, or a favorite friend. It's really a great concept.
It sounds, yeah. It was really neat.
So that was the second part.
Yeah.
And then the third part was, Simsberry is looking to participate in what's called an Hour of Code. This is a concept that was initiated by both Microsoft as well as Google in recognition of the dearth of coders and computer programmers that are emerging out of the high school and college system in the United States. And so they have come up with a concept that many schools across the United States are going to participate in. It's really an hour of focus to help all students get some exposure to computer coding, computer sciences, what it's all about, and the opportunities that that might create. So that's my update on the Curriculum Committee. Mike, anything?
Nothing tonight, Chris, thanks.
Okay. Tara?
I'm all set, thanks. That coding class, that app class was very cool to watch.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
I do have just a couple of things, just to remind the Board that we have a full day Professional Development Day on November 4th. It's our district-wide technology conference. We do not have all of the brochures printed yet, but as soon as we do, we'll get them out to you so that you can see what's going on if you're available for that day. But all of our teachers will be participating at the high school on that day. And also another reminder that this is, and I don't know the number of years, but we are in school on Veterans Day. And all of our schools are planning recognition for veterans and activities, activities at the younger level and more kinds of conversations and events for veterans at the middle and at the high school. So that will be on Tuesday, November 11th.
Just to add on your Professional Development Day, there's no school that day.
Correct. No school on that day.
No school that day. It's an election day, so all of the kids will be home while you're working hard.
That's right. But school on Veterans Day.
School on Veterans Day.
That's correct.
Thank you, Erin. Susan?
Nothing.
Okay. Burke?
One update, the Board has a copy of the memorandum regarding the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge in your folder. Last evening, the Board of Selectmen formally accepted this pledge on behalf of the town of Simsberry. And what it relates to is an effort for all town buildings as well as school buildings to reduce building energy consumption, focusing on the year 2020, and also purchasing more electricity for buildings from renewable energy sources. So Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, myself, and Tom Roy from Department of Public Works are going to be working closely on this. And there's an annual reporting requirement, so we'll be, you know, we'll be working closely. And as you've heard before, and we'll continue to hear through this budget year, we have a number of areas where we feel that we can both reduce energy usages as well as costs. And it's a real area of focus for us this year.
Thanks, Burke. Matt, anything?
Just one thing. Chris had an opportunity last week to stop by the dedication of the Fitness Center, the Thomas F. Garrity Fitness Center. The program was put on by the Gridiron Club. Really nice opportunity to acknowledge the gift. And the facility looks wonderful. It's a top-notch facility for our students who really benefit from this. And it was great to be able to bump into a bunch of people I haven't seen in a while and just talk. I know several Board members were there and really put together a nice ceremony for everybody.
It was great to see the kids, too.
Yeah.
There were a bunch of students there, talking to all the people who would come to visit, which I really enjoyed, seeing all the kids.
The football team did a good job showing us around.
They did. Yeah, very nice, very nice.
That's great. Onto recommended actions, the first being a motion to approve the minutes of October 14th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, conversation? All who approve?
Aye.
Any nay? So carried. Item number two is personnel. Susan, you want to speak to?
Sure, Chris. We have one recommendation for your consideration this evening. We've been notified by Mrs. Tracy Cassane, who's a physical education teacher for us at Latimer Line School, that she's requesting a non-salary guaranteed leave of absence for the remainder of the 2014, 2015 school year for the purposes of childbearing. Therefore, we would recommend that the Board of Ed move to grant Mrs. Cassane a non-salary leave of absence for the period from November 18th, 2014, through June 30th of 2015 with a guaranteed position upon her return.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any conversation? All who approve?
Aye.
Any nays? So carried.
Thank you.
Next is, we have two gift items. And Burke can speak to those?
Yes. First one that we're asking for the Board's consideration on is a gift from the SPTC for $1,500 that would help with a variety of high school-related activities and events as outlined in the memo. There's equipment for, related to a student council tournament. There's items for classroom use. There's also advertising for a new writing center at the high school, and also helping with the purchase of a special projector for the auditorium. So we'd ask for your approval of that. And I don't know if Neil, you had any other comments to make?
I'll note that the projector was, anticipated your approval. The projector was already used at the pep rally with great success with, on Friday, as we revamped the pep rally. So it was already put to immediate use.
All right, so we'll have a formal motion.
I hope we accept the gift before it's released. Before it starts, you know.
Any conversation or controversy?
Thank you.
All who approve?
Aye.
Any nay? So carried. Neil? All right. Second gift, Burke?
And the second gift this evening is also a gift of $1,500. And it's via the Arch Diocese of Hartford. It's in support of the Simsberry High School Best Buddies Club. And you probably recall from, I believe, one of Helen's presentations last year, a very touching video about one of those student relationships. As you may recall, the Best Buddies Club focuses on developing one-on-one friendships between typically developing students and students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And Father White of St. Catherine's was able to essentially apply for a grant through the Arch Diocese of Hartford. So that's been awarded, and we'd like the Board to accept that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation?
I think it's great.
Just thanks to Father White for thinking of getting that for us. That's fantastic.
Excellent program for a school. We have someone in the audience who knows.
May I add?
Yeah, sure.
The parent liaison for the Best Buddies Club at Simsberry High School is Mrs. Noel Alex. And her daughter Kate actually was the subject of the video. I'm sure she wouldn't mind me sharing that. And she worked really closely with Father White to write that grant and was really thrilled as parent liaison of the club to have accepted.
Thank you for sharing that.
All who approve?
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. Now we're on to information and reports. And the first is an update on the McGowan gift plan. If you remember, we were going to have both Erin, as well as Scott, come back to us with some parameters and suggested guidelines. So Erin and Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. All right. Oh, I was going way too fast. I was hitting it with my finger. So what we wanted to present to you tonight is an overview of where we are in our thinking around the Kathleen McGowan Fund and our next steps as we go forward. Just to remind the Board and the community the considerations to date of what we had done. Back in December of 2013 is when the Board of Education approved the gift from the Kathleen McGowan Estate. Then in March, we brought some proposals forward to the Board of Education. We brought four proposals forward. And at that point, we were asked to go back and apply filters to each of the proposals that we brought forward, one being the Interactive Learning Commons, scholarships at Simsberry High School, preschool considerations, and a field house at Simsberry High School. The filters that we came back to you with were around staying power, legacy, elementary commitment, and why this purpose. And so we did that. And at the board meeting, the Board suggested for us, although the filters helped us look a little closer at those proposals, the suggestion and charge from the Board of Education was to create a planning committee, to put a committee together of a variety of different individuals to come together to determine policy guidelines and a process in which to move forward. And so that's what we're here tonight to talk with you about in order for us to have some consideration for the usage of funding during this particular school year. So I've invited Scott Baker as an elementary principal to co-chair this with me, and he's going to talk a little bit more about this.
Sure. So Erin and I have already started the ball rolling in that we've met a couple times to talk about, you know, where do we, where do we go forward and really chart out the next, you know, eight to 10 months of decision-making with this. And so, you know, on this next slide, you can see where we're plotting out. So just to begin, you know, the first thing is to create a steering committee. And the charge of that steering committee is really to establish what type of criteria for awards would we, would we want to develop, lay out a submission process, come up with dates, deadlines, and such, and then establish a protocol and a standing committee for reviewing submissions for gifts. And so, you know, the steering committee could possibly be, you know, similar members for that standing committee as well. Throughout the winter, once we've met a couple times, we would come back to the Board of Ed and present the recommendations of the steering committee to you. And then in the spring, hopefully be in a position to award gifts. A little bit of detail on the steering committee, because I think that's important to know, who would be represented. And, you know, Erin and I talked at length about the stakeholders that should be involved here. So we already have Erin as a central office representation. Burke will be representing from the business office, myself. I've talked to an elementary teacher, but we will look, solicit to get good representation across the elementary schools. We'll be looking for a member of the PTO of the elementary schools, community member representation. And then the call goes out now for one of you also to serve on our committee as well. So that's, I think we're really trying to make sure that we have multiple voices and many perspectives on this steering committee to point us in the right direction. And so just to summarize, November 13th is the first date, so you can check your calendar to see if one of you might be available that night, or that day. And that'll be our first time for our working committee to get together. Like I said, Erin and I have already done some research. We've looked into how some of these foundations and grants run in neighboring towns and, you know, reached out to some people that we know in other towns and how these types of foundations run. So we're not starting from scratch. We've got some ideas of how to proceed. I'm envisioning that committee meeting a couple times in order to then be able to bring the outcomes to you in February, one of the February Board of Ed meetings. And then hopefully by May and June, we'll be able to come before you with some ideas for submission. So, questions?
Burke, could you speak to the financial piece of it?
Sure. Yes, yes. So the Board may recall at one of your previous meetings that you designated me as the treasurer for this district-wide school activity-type fund, and also authorized moving forward with an investment advisor firm. So we've contacted, and you have, I believe, a copy in your folder tonight of the fiduciary investment advisor, one-page sort of option choices. And what we're looking to go with is just to start, start simple, essentially, an index fund-type mix of funds. We currently have the funds in a separate bank account, but in order to really try to start building this interest and that we'd be spending in perpetuity for this, for these annual projects, would, would need us to start, you know, getting the investment process going. We have the application, like a 40-page application that we're working through, and so we'll be opening up those accounts in the very near future.
Correct to say, Burke, a couple of things. FIA is the advisor for the Town Pension Fund.
Yes.
Defined benefit, defined contribution, and no P.
Yes.
Well respected by the town.
Yes.
And this was also put together on the guidance of our attorney, Tom Mooney.
Right.
So we think we've got it right from a setup standpoint.
Right.
I think it's great.
And so the, the sort of, the other question that I think has been answered since maybe the Board's last meeting, which was working with our auditors, and we know how the reporting of this fund, the financial reporting will, will be happening, and we've received guidance from them as well.
Other questions?
Just Scott, a couple of questions. How many people in total did you perceive being on the committee?
Erin and I discussed that we don't want to be too big. So I think, you know, roughly in the neighborhood of 10 or so, right?
Okay.
And any ideas as to how you would recruit members of the public as well as representation from the association?
So, you know, I think a good starting place for the parent-teacher organization is the leadership group that Matt meets with monthly. I mean, that's a good starting point, and I think that we'll be able to, because they represent the parents, our PTO presidents, and so that's a good place to start. In his terms, as teachers, you know, clearly, you know, I'm relying at least one of my members for someone I know as, as part of the group. So I've already recruited one.
Okay.
Teacher to come join us on the committee, Kristen Pabbish at Terrifield School, so.
Will we try to go across schools on that?
We will. And grade level as well, at the elementary level.
To get multiple perspectives of grade levels in schools.
I actually have this topic on my agenda Thursday morning with the PTO leadership group to improve.
Okay.
So my hope is to identify somebody that.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions?
I think so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Our next informational report is Neil's High School Academic Report.
All right. So Neil is here tonight on an annual basis to give you a report of Simsberry High School based on the outcomes through his annual report. I was able at the last meeting to give you very high-level overview and sort of whet your appetite for some of the results that have occurred at Simsberry High School. But Neil's here tonight to give you an in-depth report that's inclusive of data academic results, as well as major themes of work that's happening at Simsberry High School, along with some budget themes that he's thinking about as we move into budget season.
Great.
So it is an annual report. I'm excited every October to come. I'm especially excited this year, I think, with the positive metrics that we have to share, and including some new metrics that have never been available before that I think are really exciting about the high school. But I'm mostly excited that I'm following up Brian's report about Spirit Week, because if you remember, one year ago tonight, I was following up Jacob Gattenger's report about Spirit Week. So my big night to brag about the high school started with a whole public audience. And so we're in a better place as we begin already, having made a few tweaks to some things that went wrong last year, and already in a good place. So something else we worked on last year, we'll go right into, that was a really important piece of work. Susan mentioned the leadership team that this year is turning its attention toward a GPA system that really hasn't been looked at in about a decade. But last year's work of that same group was, once every five years, we try to take a look at, just as the Board did with the district-level core values document. It was time on our cycle at the high school, once every five years, to look at our mission statement and core values, and spent a series of four meetings engaged with the leadership team, and then through some feedback loops with our faculty, with our SPTC, with our student council, the whole set of conversations over the course of the year to develop what now is, for the next five years, how we will be speaking about the fundamental principles of what we're trying to do at Simsberry High School. And really, in some ways, we, we thought about this as a, as a marketing device of Simsberry High School. What is it that we value? What do we want to put out there to the public? So in trying to not only make those statements about what made Simsberry High School a most exceptional school, but we also wanted it to be memorable. So we went toward this notion of just a few simple words that would be alliterative and stick with people. So it became this, preparation, passion, and personal growth. There's different versions of this. We define those terms, and I'm going to show you on one that's a little easier to read in a second here. But this graphic that was designed by Martha Hogan is now part of what you see in the high school as you enter, as you, as you go into classrooms, and trying to capture the really important work of that leadership team in capturing. So the next slide's a little easier to read in terms of those things. And the first of the three principles is preparation. Tonight's report is going to be all about the academic preparation that we give students. And I frequently say that I believe that our academic preparation, that's what a school has got to be about. Simsberry High School does that as well as any public or private school in the state of Connecticut, and you can look beyond that. And the metrics that you're going to see tonight back up that statement about the kind of, that P is really about our academic preparation, in the same way that you hear other people in the private school, it's really talk about prep schools. That's, that's what that term is about. Secondly, really important to the leadership team as we developed our final statement was the notion of passion, that we think one of the things that this Board has supported and that we do is that array of electives and extracurricular offerings, and that if there is something that you want to pursue at Simsberry High School, it's not only that we have that breadth of things, whether it's engineering, or business, or biomedical science, or music and performing arts, but it's the quality to which we do each of those things and allow students to pursue a passion that while they're in high school. Very proud of that and felt that that had to be one of the fundamental statements. And then lastly, as we were, we wrestled with a few different P words, ended up at personal growth, but really around all the work we've done in the last three to four years around the Trojan Code, around asking students to take on more leadership, that notion that when you enter high school at 14, you're still very much a kid, you're, you know, under the wing of your parents, and by the time you're 18, walking across that stage, you're a much more independent person. And what are we trying to accomplish over those four years in terms of personal decision-making, leadership, and being able to literally go out into the world? And some of, so each of those statements has a couple of bullets underneath it that really capture our values. As we head into our accreditation process that you're going to see later in this, we actually will, the Board should take a formal vote on this document as something, that's something that we can do at a, at a future meeting. But that's certainly something that we worked very hard at. The leadership team uses a year to tackle an issue, and we were really proud of the final effort. So that's kind of the foundation of where we start. And then this October report is often about a lot of the testing, the data that shows where we stand. And so that's, that's where we'll move into here. So the bullets that you see before we hit some of the data charts. the data charts, we'll start with the CAPT science results. We were a little nervous at this report last year, knowing that over the years, as our CAPT results came in, Simsbury High School's CAPT results had always been tremendous in reading, writing, mathematics, and good in science. And once reading, writing, and mathematics were going to not be metrics that they measured anymore, and it was only going to be the science score, that we knew that there was growth there in comparison to where we stood against other districts. I am pleased to show you in a moment what happened with those CAPT scores as we put our science department, as we kind of put our mind to it, that an improvement process to look at those scores was in place and results came. AP participation, certainly, this board knows that our window into advanced placement has opened over the years. You'll see some data that talks about more students than ever completing one or more AP courses. And then, I want to talk a little bit about what you'll see is some data that shows our overall number of AP tests is decreasing. And there's some reasons behind that, and I want the board to understand that. Third, our college acceptance rates. You probably heard anecdotally out in town, the class of 2014 did exceptionally well with college admissions. We measure that in one way at the top of the class. We've used for a long time the Barron's Tier One, which is 55, just around 55 schools that are the most competitive admissions colleges and universities in the country. That list does not change very much from year to year, and it is a neutral way to measure that. Simsbury High has, over the years, typically been in the range of 17%, sometimes 18%. The class of 2014, 19% of students were accepted into a Tier One college. That continued beyond that top tier of students. And just as I always try to do, if you, the 19%, by the way, in a class of 400, this class was a little smaller than 400, but 40 kids is 10%, so 19% is 76 kids who were accepted into one of those most competitive colleges or universities. But that continued beyond that top 20%, with some great acceptances for students in the next several bands of the class. And then, one of the things that is new that I'm going to get a chance to show you tonight, for the first time ever, an organization called the National Student Clearinghouse is able to track students through a unique ID number from colleges, from high school into college, and let us know, are they arriving at college? And are they succeeding at college? And that is a report that got that news back, had seen it for the first time, and then in doing some comparables on it, is really good news that I'm excited to share. So, we start with CAPT, and here's the headline, is that Simsbury is right at the top. And this is all the districts. This is not just our DURG, that you could see the two different ways that we are at the top. The first is just the average scale score, that CAPT scores, we're used to reporting them in bands. There's advanced, goal, proficient. So, but beneath that, there is a scale score that every student gets, and then you can take an average for the class. So, at 308.7, as you could see, when I got that, I said, "That seems awfully high. Let me see what other districts had." And it turns out, as I scoured through the website, that Simsbury, in fact, was the number-one district on that metric. In the second column, you can see that the goal is, often that's what's the kind of the Hartford Current Report of what happened, because what percentage of your students in the 10th grade met the goal? And Westport and Region Nine, who are two and three on this list, were actually slightly at a higher percentage of meeting goal. But when you go to the third column and look at our percentage of students who scored in the advanced band, we were, again, the highest district in the state, with 62% of our 10th graders last year scoring in the advanced band. That happened for a couple of reasons. Our teachers really did some intense professional development around why in comparison to the other disciplines where our scores were relatively higher, what was happening in science? They did some more spiral review of concepts for students. It's a little bit of a different test than some of our others in that it's content that comes from ninth and 10th grade. And so, a little bit more of a conscious review of some of those concepts in ninth grade was part of their professional development plan. But we brought students in as part of the combo smarter balance testing plan, and we ran, before the day of the CAPT testing, a two-hour review of science concepts that you could expect to see on the CAPT with all 10th graders. So, they came in one morning from 8:00 to 10:00. Our science teachers, 18 science teachers, split up the class, and they ran through kind of a fun, interactive format, kind of a game-style thing. They ran a two-hour review. Clearly, that paid dividends the next day as kids sat for the two 55-minute science tests. So, as we are, we will repeat that process, having seen these results, and really want to congratulate our science department and our 10th, now 11th grade students for these results. Couple other slides that reflect it. The rocket ship may be a little gaudy, but, you know, we are, it is science, so we're trying to...
I did mention that to Aaron.
But that would show you, this is an attempt to show you where we had been as a percentage of the class. So, last year, 73% of the students met goal. So, that increase and over, it had never been higher than 79 before. This 82% is the highest that Simsbury has ever achieved on this particular assessment, and the 62% at advanced is also highlighted with that star that is on it. So, that is our CAPT piece. I don't think there's another CAPT slide. That was it. So, that's our CAPT.
Even when we, I remember when we did the initial kind of data look at this, and we were, you were thinking strategically about how to pull the science people together. I even think how we use data, right, was, you know, lining up the success that this same student may have had.
Right.
In reading and in math, and talking about, hey, there really is no reason this student can't be successful in science, really opened the doors to the conversation with the teachers, which was great.
Absolutely. So, turning for a couple of slides to our advanced placement results that we look at each year. This is a multi, you know, about a decade worth of data. I'll point to the left side of the screen. You can see that long ago, we had less than 400 students participating in taking AP, less than 400 exams given. And that number, over time, has increased dramatically, up over 1,000 for the past two years. And this year, the final column, the yellow, you could see, I can't read that from here, 978 tests that were given last year, and 78% of those, 978, were threes or higher, so 776 of those were threes or higher. But you could see that that is a little lower than the year before in terms of a raw number, okay? There's a couple of reasons for that. Two, three, and two years ago was really the height of population, so that this is the beginning. When you start to measure things with raw numbers of tests given, I would account for about half of that difference, just being that a smaller number of juniors and a smaller number of seniors, who often would take multiple AP tests, and that number, that raw number decreases. But also, about half of it is accounted for in a decision that we made that was around the AP Biology course. And for many years, having only the options of a Level Two Biology for sophomores or an AP Bio. And after a long time of studying that issue and what the College Board's recommendation was, this is the first cohort that went through and had the option for Biology Honors that was not AP. So, that number alone in Biology dropped about 60 students from the year before who had taken AP, who are, who did not, who chose, and I would argue appropriately, an honors Biology in sophomore year. So, two things that contribute to this, the enrollment and the AP Bio decision. So, I want you to understand in terms of the raw number. In a percentage manner, you're going to see, actually, a little bit of an increase, but this is important to note. I would say, just in terms of the exams passed, you can see for about six years now, we've been very steadily at that 80% range. And that, this year was 78%. That is, we were a little, that is a funny number when you look at it overall, because some tests, we have 100% of students that get threes or higher, and some tests are much more difficult. Chemistry would be a classic example of an AP test that is passed at a much lower rate. So, that 78 is the overall number, and yet there's pockets that are much higher and much lower than that. So, that's where we're spending our time in looking at that, is in those courses where the number is a little lower, because there are many courses where it's just cause for celebration. Literally, those, that smaller number of AP Biology students who chose AP Bio as sophomores, all of them got threes, fours, or fives. That had not been the case in the year before that. And then, in courses like our AP English, our Calculus, the scores are 90, are, in the 95% of the students who are sitting for the exam are getting threes, fours, and fives. So, a couple other ways to look at this. This one is that same, the only new information this one gives you is that yellow, how many overall students are sitting for an AP exam. So, again, on a slight decrease for the same reasons, 496 different students took an AP exam into the 900 and something exams. And then, the last one is the one that I think we've, that I've highlighted the most with the board over the last few years, is this metric that the College Board is measuring and that we're trying to put front and center of how many students, while in high school, are finishing with at least one AP course completed. And we've been on a steady increase on this, and I didn't know if we could go higher than 69% that we did last year, and we did. And 72% of our students in the class of 2014, now, that is completing at least one advanced placement course. The number is a little lower than that in terms of numbers, those that got a three or higher. It's about 64% that got a three or higher on at least one exam. But the research on this is clear that whether you got a three or higher or not, the correlation between taking an AP course in high school and success in college, which is coming up in a second, is just a really strong correlation between those things. So, that, wanted to make sure that we highlighted this, given the kind of downward bump on the other two slides. SAT is an interesting thing to look at, and I'm going to put a new wrinkle to it this year. This is the data that we've reported to you each year. And I actually looked at it a little more deeply because I was getting some inconsistent numbers when you get certain reports that come from the College Board. And then, we take all that data, and we put it into our systems, and I ask for different reports. And some of these reports that I would be getting from Ed Lyman would have slightly different averages for SATs. And so, I would be in these long conversations with Ed Lyman, saying, "How did I get these different numbers?" And there's actually a really logical explanation for this. That's going to be pretty revealing about how SAT scores get reported. This slide is what the College Board reports as Simsbury High's mean for the SAT. So, at the 2014 end, you could see that our math score mean was a 577 in comparison to the last four years before that, slightly higher than last year, only lower than one, than the 2012 year. The reading score was not as good as the year before. The mean was 563, and a little depressed from what some of the previous year's scores were. And the writing score was 569, really statistically, no difference between what it had been the year before. And the highest point was in the 2010, and we had not reached that mark since then. But the data that I was getting from Ed was very different, and so, as I looked at that, I was trying to figure out some contrasting things. These are SAT scores that I would not say, huh, in comparison to the last couple of classes, these weren't particularly strong SAT scores. And yet, I knew I was sitting on a class that had gotten into colleges at this astounding rate, and so what was the dichotomy there? So, it turns out that when Ed reports a lot of the data, it's based on the kid's best score. And what we, what the College Board reports is your last score. So, after many years of mystery on this, I think I've unlocked something that I think all high school principals should be looking at, because if you sit three times for the SAT, the College Board is going to take your last sitting, whether those scores are lower or not, and say that that's the mean that the kid got. So, the next slide, actually, we redid our scores based on the super score. And that's what they call that, when you take each kid's best score for math, reading, and writing. And so, I'll point now, this slide is a little, this is a little dyslexic, but the slide now, the 2014's on the left. It was just on the right on the last slide. But you can see in math, so the College Board is reporting our mean for math as 577, but when you take the super score, each kid's best score for math, it's actually a 589. So, it's a full 12-point difference in mathematics. And interestingly, for, as well, when we take the super score, there's a little more consistency over multiple years than the up and down that we see from the College Board score. So, second one, take a look at the red columns, which are the reading scores. Our College Board-reported score, which looked depressed on the last slide of 563, when you take the super score, it's 578, a full 15 points higher, and more consistent with where we had been in the last several years. And then, on the writing, I was blown away with a full 18-point difference between the College Board score and the Simsbury super score of 587. Now, I don't think most high school principals are looking at it this way, and I think they probably should be. I think we do our students a service when we report it both ways. One of the things I don't want to be doing is reporting the super score, because the College Board is going to continue to report the mean the way they do. Their argument on that is, with all the testing that happens across all the high schools in the country, they have to just grab that last score for the sake of ease. But the super score is actually quite, and would probably support more the argument of these students did extremely well in the college admissions process, and you would see that the difference between these means and the College Board means are pretty significant.
Neil, does that mean the scores go down when they take it subsequently?
They can, they often can.
I know.
That on a multiple trial, the different ways that can happen, either fatigue, or some students will tell you, "I know I've already done as a great score on the mathematics section."
That's right.
And I'm going to go take those mathematics sections, but what I'm about is my full focus when I flip that page, and it's a reading section for this one.
So, I think if they were going up all the time, they'd be flipped with the super score.
And they don't go up all the time.
Right.
So, students will often take it two, and now more frequently, three times, and have a higher score in each one of the tests on a different administration. So, really took a different lens on this this year, and I think it's pretty interesting, and probably is going to cause me to look a little differently in the future at the little bit of the rollercoaster that we have with the SAT, and try to look at it as a more steady thing over time. So, interesting, another look at that this year. This is the last SAT slide, just still, this one, I am taking off the College Board scores, because the only thing I can compare to our other schools is the College Board scores. So, this one is just highlighting clearly well above the state averages, as we would expect, but I wanted to show you where we compare to the DURG averages. So, this is DURG B compared to where Simsbury High School is, and you can see that it's pretty much 20 points difference that we're outscoring the DURG. One slide that you've asked me to bring back over time, and I continue to meet your wishes on this, is where our grading patterns are over time. And this board certainly dealt with grading patterns at its heyday about 12 or 14 years ago, and now, where we have been in terms of, this is percentage of As that are awarded in core subjects only at Simsbury High School. So, this is only English, Science, Social Studies, Math, World Language. We take out all of the PE, an elective program, and say at the core, what's the As this year's 2014. Final transcript, not the ups and downs of first quarter, second quarter, but the final at the end of the year was 33% As. We had been at that range in 2011, '12, dropped back a couple of points last year, and then it went back to that range. Just so you know, grade distributions in their beginning-of-the-year conference, that's a data point that we share with every teacher at Simsbury High School. Here's what your grade distribution is against the other teachers who teach English IX, or IP, they get their data compared to their peers. And we believe it to be a healthy kind of peer monitoring process of where you are. So, that's a data point that is always part of this presentation. I'll move quickly, because this one, I'm really excited. This is new. This is the organization that I... This is new. This is the organization that I told you about, the National Student Clearing House. We, we got some preliminary data on this for the first time about two years ago. We went to a big conference out in the western part of the state and were promised that this was going to be new data that we would get every year, and then it kind of went away. Out of nowhere, last spring, it's just arrived to high school principals again and saying, "We can now give you accurate data based on tracking students and do they end up in accredited two- and four-year colleges." So, what you have here, and the, the marking point on this, by the way, you'll see six columns. Those represent six years out of high school. And the Student Clearing House says that the, the gold standard for college completion rates is six years. You can't look at, do students earn a degree in four years because kids transfer schools, or they change majors, or something happens financially that they have to take a semester off. And so, their marking point is in six years, do kids leave high school and earn a degree? And I think it's probably a fair standard for them to measure by. So, it starts, I'll just orient you and then get to the highlights at the end. The green in the first column, it's, really, not going to be able to be read by my middle-aged eyes now.
You to college.
That percentage is 84 point, 85.6, I've got it in front of me now, 85.6%. That means that the Clearing House, through those matching IDs, found 85.6 of our 2007 graduates enrolled in a college in the fall of 2007. The yellow band that you see in the next year is increased students who didn't appear in the first year enrolled in a college, maybe took a gap year, maybe went and did a PG year, but then end up at a college. And so, what you see is a steady increase of students who ended up at some point in six years going to college. And, in fact, the only, only 7.4% at no point were found by the Clearing House in a college. So, that's that final blue column. And what you then see is degrees earned is the maroon. So, a very thin band in the year two. Those are students who earned an associate's degree after two years, a few students who had earned an associate's degree at a two-year college, then a couple more in the third year, and then you see the large bump in the fourth year. These are our students who went and earned a four-year degree in four years, and that number is 53.2%. Interestingly, that number increases pretty significantly over two more years, first to 66.5% and then to 70.6% of the 2007 graduates. So, that number is well above the national average of students who earn a college degree, which hovers in the high 30s. And we were really gratified to see that all the anecdotes that we hear from students about college, that I'm prepared, that I feel like I, I am better prepared than many of my roommates or friends on my floor, statistically bore itself out. One of the other really important data points is that year two, many of the other schools that I've talked to about that, it's that I went to college and I wasn't ready, and their number falls off of kids who are in college in year two. Ours did not. Ours increased in year two, in terms of students who were in college. So, so I got 71%. I said, hm, feels pretty good. It sounds right. And fortunately, the State Department website left everybody else's data open too. So, I did some investigating. This was an interesting night with my iPad as I looked at where we were in terms of, how do you compare that to where everybody else is? So, I, I certainly did our Derg comparison. Only the shoreline town of Madison had a slightly higher number on this at 74%. When I looked at anybody in Hartford County, Simsberry was higher. So, took a look at whether you were in the Derg or not, I looked up all the Hartford County completion rates after six years, and then even outpaced a couple of the Derg A schools. Obviously, some of this is socioeconomic, that, you know, there are, where families have means to send students to college, but I think it speaks to preparation that students have. And certainly, I take 71%. This data was extremely exciting for our faculty, by the way, that the Simsberry High faculty really embraced this as a number that was important to them in terms of what they're doing to prepare students for the next level. And then here's the last one, that last data point, and I think Aaron gave you a little bit of a preview of this, but I definitely want to put a finer point on it now. And this is, so the first bullet on there, Aaron, if you would, this is related to a 2012 exam that's taken by a random sampling of students. We get contacted by the international organization, PISA, is a test that's given to students in 34 highly industrialized countries. That's, and it's not given to every Simsberry High student, but it is a true random sampling. And then the same test is given in, hang on here, well, I'm going to orient them through the packet. The, the, so, 75 students took this test in 2012. We didn't get any results until the spring of 2014. They, they just, we, we had not heard about it. And frankly, we had given this test a couple other times as principal, and I never got any results. So, this is the first time I had received school-level results of the PISA. This is, by the way, if you read education news, this is the one where they tell you, "The United States has fallen to 25th in the world in math and 32nd in science." This, that's all based on PISA results. And so, the cover story of Time Magazine yesterday about teacher tenure, if you open to the little highlight at what the story's about, it's how the United States is ranking in the world against the highest performing countries. And there's that attention-grabbing headline again, that we've fallen behind Estonia, that the United States is, so, those are always, I think, shocking statements made at a national level, and I'm sure that in terms of the metrics, they're true. But, you never said, where do we stand? What, how do we benchmark ourselves internationally? And this report gave us the first chance. So, if you, you have a report in your packet, and it was too much to put on slides, so I want the board to just know what it has. The third, the third page of that report, and it corresponds to the, to the bullet that Aaron has up there, what you'll see is that the, they give you your school-level results in terms of the comparison, and they give it to you in terms of all United States schools, and then in terms of the OECD average. That's the average of those 34 highly industrialized countries. The green, that's, when you have a color copy of this, it's green and up. It means yours, in that particular testing range, your score is above the average. What you could see on that for Simsberry High School, on that page and then the next one, every subcategory, Simsberry High School, of every test, Simsberry High School scores above the US average, the international average. And interestingly, when they break it down on the next page, they even break it down to schools like ours that have 0 to 10% of students who are, English is not their first language, and schools in suburbs. We outscore all suburban schools in the United States on every, every category of every test. So, that is the first look at it, that, in every way that we measure, we're above the average. But then on the next several pages, you'll see that what it actually does is takes your average and compares it to those countries' averages. So, the first sheet that you come across is mathematics. And out of 34 countries, statistically speaking, only Shanghai and Singapore had any statistical advantage over Simsberry High students in mathematics. There were three countries where there was no measurable statistical difference, and we outpaced 29 other countries in that metric. And that whole list on the left-hand side of your sheet shows where we are. So, you, you can bring in the other bullets on this, Aaron, too, which is continuing. So, that was mathematics. You can then look at where the science literacy, corresponding with the cap scores that I showed you. In terms of a comparison, only Shanghai had no statistical difference, and we outperformed 33 other countries based on our average on the science literacy portion of this particular assessment. And then lastly, on the reading one, three countries that had no statistical difference with us, and we outpaced 31 of the other industrialized countries. So, new results, again, ones that the faculty had never, we had never been able to share with the faculty before. Incredibly, just supporting of their work. And this was a big splash at our opening faculty meeting of the year, for them to feel like, you know, that their work in comparison to anybody else's is, is literally world-class. So, my, my final bouncing in thing here is the verdict.
You want me to do that again?
Well, it's, and it's not, it's not as Gaudi as the rocket ship. But, what I tried to make the argument with the faculty is that we are, our students are indeed the best in the world. I mean, we have now data to say that, that we are competing with students across the world. And so, when you hear those scary international comparisons, don't let people tell you that that's Simsberry, because it's not. And we finally have the data to talk about that. So, that's all the typical data reporting and metrics I usually bring. I've got just two other slides to talk through, three other, because I have a little bit of a budget thing. But, I'll pause here and see if there are any questions that people have about any of that.
Who takes the PISA in our schools?
Our school, we get a list, it's actually not by grade level, it's by birth year. So, they give you, it was 15-year-olds. So, is some of whom were sophomores and some of whom were young juniors at the time, when we gave it in 2012. And they give you, these are the students through a database that the federal government supplies them, and that it is.
They tell us.
They tell us who takes it.
How many students took it?
75 at a random sampling. There is one nice bonus, if you are one of the, it's a two-hour test. And unlike any other random tests that you're chosen for, PISA writes the student a check for $25 for taking the test. So, the student, the student walks out with a $25. So, we had some happy kids to take the test.
My daughter was among them. She was a very happy girl. Yeah. She was like, "Why do I have to do this?" I'm like, "Just, just go."
So, we'll do this every year now?
We get chosen, you get told when you give the test.
Oh, all right.
Yes, you get told when you give the test. They, PISA only administers it once every three years. So, we might get asked in 2015, but we might not. I've been asked, I bet we will, because of my cycle of, there's been two other administrations, so that would imply that each of the other times we have administered the test.
So, will we put this up on the website?
We are highlighting it where I can, it is part of.
Wherever we can.
He's got a t-shirt he's going to start wearing.
We added, one of the things that we did do with this information, in order to pump it out to our colleges, is we put a new section on our college profile to highlight the class and put these very same bullets on there to say, "Hey, our students in terms of international comparisons are proving to be in very good company."
I think too, you know, our elementary principals, this resonated with them as well, and they shared some of this information with, at their faculty meetings, you know, the culminating experience at Simsberry High School, and this is how our, our students are performing. I shared the, the info in my parent letter to kick off the school year as well. I mean, I think as we initiated a new strategic plan, we really, as Neil has demonstrated, have some new metrics that give us a different opportunity, a different, a different look, and a different way to really go about our continuous improvement work that we've had in place for a long time. But I think there's a certain excitement around this college and career readiness and these markers that we have now that we haven't had before.
And while I think that my open house presentation to parents every year is stimulating, this one actually drew applause from the audience.
So, one more time.
That one also really resonated with, with our parents, so.
As far as, I mean, we're talking about some, but these kids are all different levels of learners.
Absolutely. These, the, the 75 who were chosen were not 75 honors students at Simsberry High School. They were chosen from the full breadth of our student body.
And when you're starting to talk about, more about the APs, you are talking about a broader breadth as well. We have a lot more students that are taking it, that are really getting experiences that they were not expected to get.
That's right.
A while ago. And that's, that's exciting.
That number of 71, 72% of students completing at least one, we couldn't have come close to that the way we were administering AP even six or seven years ago. I mean, that number is enormous.
And some of our AP classes, I know we tried to target kids who wouldn't, you know, find a subject matter that was interesting. How are the exits from those? I mean, are you talking to those kids? Are they feeling good about it? Are they stressed?
Yeah, well, it's a couple of things. They, they feel good about it. They feel good that they took the course. The, but those would be, it kind of makes intuitive sense that the students who are stretching to take an AP in senior year, maybe for the first time, I would not say we have as many threes or higher in those particular tests. And yet I keep saying to those teachers, "That's okay. We want to keep improving with that, but we can't expect to have the same type of results in those courses where we've opened the door as we might in something like Calculus."
Well, and they all had to take a class, they all had to take a test to graduate, to get a score.
Absolutely.
That's a Simsberry High School score. So, they all passed the test, they all passed the course.
Oh, absolutely.
So, that's, that's the key element, that they're leaving with a positive experience.
The experience, the preparedness.
Right, right.
And one of the things with, you know, we talk a lot with our seniors who take the test. They, by the time the test comes in May, seniors know where they've been accepted to. They often know whether their college has a policy around accepting AP scores. And some of them don't have really a tremendous amount of incentive, because they know, even if I get that score, my college is not going to accept it. And so, what a lot of our students take, well, they'll go in, really for the sake of their teachers, they'll say, "I try hard." But they probably didn't put in, I mean, if you're going to really take an AP, you should be studying in the weeks ahead of that. And a number of our seniors, our sophomores and juniors are doing that. A number of our seniors might be a little late on the pre-studying before they go in to take that.
But again, they did get a decent grade when they were taking it.
That's right.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
Nope, great. So, just, just, I don't like to make it all about the data. I like to talk about some of our other work. So, just to highlight, these were some of the things that I put forward to the faculty. I'm sure the board has heard reports from Aaron and Betsy and others about Common Core and how the schools are implementing it. In particular, at the high school, our math department has had a whole multi-year plan that we really have kind of separated them out working on it. But, across the rest of the disciplines, we decided to take a focus on the reading standards. You can get lost in all the different standards that there are, reading, multiple different kinds of writing standards, speaking, listening standards. We said, what would be the most beneficial for everybody in the school? So, we chose the reading standards and took this focus on close reading. What that really means is rereading. And so, we've emphasized with our faculty, choosing texts that are at a complexity, a lexical difficulty, that requires a read beyond, many readings in high school, by the nature of having to cover a lot, are, "Read it, can you answer a few comprehension questions, and we're on to the next thing." And we're trying to say to our teachers, "Put more text in front of students that requires that multiple read," so kind of a classic document-based question in a US history class, where kids really have to go back and look at different perspectives and weigh the arguments, and making that a more frequent occurrence across all experiences in high school. We've done some internal PD on that. We're excited that we had a group of teachers that came in in the summer, kind of built up their own expertise, and they're delivering the PD to their peers. And it's been a nice model for us in terms of sharing that work. Second big thing is the continued implementation of the teacher evaluation system. With the scope of teacher evaluation at Simsberry High School with 140 teachers, I know this board heard about the, what that was, we just had to approach it in a very systematic way to get the work done. And we were very proud of the fact that we held three conferences with every teacher and did three observations of every teacher. That was a lot, but we think we, we set some internal deadlines around that, and we used our secretarial support to schedule meetings in a way that allowed administrator, department supervisor, and teacher, it got built into the schedule at the beginning of the year, and you didn't move it. Like, it was going to happen. And we really dedicated ourselves to it. As a result, I think our year two has been very non-threatening for teachers at the high school, that it is a, it is a system that not everybody loves every aspect of it, but I think we've implemented it in a way that teachers can see the value in the system, even if they don't love all the aspects of the metrics and the ratings of the system. And then lastly, I want the board to be aware of the fact that two years from now, in 2016, we will face our once-every-10-year accreditation process. So, for the faculty, that involves some professional development around not only curriculum work and some of that same kind of instructional work, but also just work around doing a self-study as a faculty against the standards, and looking at ourselves, writing reports that are in preparation for the visit. There's also a whole preparation for the board, but I'll save that for you for 2016, because we've got plenty of time. So, as I said in that, that box down at the bottom, for us, it's not, for, we've really treated it as not a reform movement. And as everybody has talked about ed reform, we've steered away from that term and really just talked about incremental improvement. Knowing you were heading into budget season, some of the things that were on our plate, wanted to just wrap with this, giving you a little preview of what's on our minds at the high school. I know you had a report on, at all levels about class size, and we did feel... at all levels about class size. And we did feel a little pinch and that was clear in the class size. I would say though, that while our staffing reductions did cause some bubbling of class size, I'm not worried about that long-term at all. In that, the enrollment is going to decline a little bit. And with, with the staffing that we have now, we should be okay. It's not going to take additional FTE to get those classes back to the class size guidelines. That's, I think, important for, it will just kind of catch up with itself, if you will. Secondly, that professional development, curriculum development, that's in the line of that accreditation ramp-up. There is some work, really, you want your curriculum documents to be as up-to-date as possible going into that process. That was not a strength 10 years ago. It can be one now with some additional work on our part. And I, and I think it will be. At the curriculum committee meeting that Chris mentioned, we have a unique opportunity with something called the AP Capstone Opportunity. A little over 200 high schools in the country have been invited into this first pilot phase. And it's a two-course sequence of an AP seminar course, a year-long course around that interdisciplinary topic that Chris spoke about. And then secondly, an AP research, which would be more of a 12th grade thing. A two-course sequence that would allow students to actually earn what they are, the college board is going to be presenting down the road as AP diplomas. And that you could present yourself in the college admissions cycle as, "I'm a candidate for an AP diploma because I've taken these courses as well as a menu of other APs." An interesting option. We are talking right now with our English and Social Studies Department supervisors about how to craft a pilot around that. I put it on the budget preview slide because it does have some budget implications if we move forward. There's, there's not only the implication of a new course, but there's some pretty significant training dollars because in order to participate, you have to send teachers for a week of training to write a curriculum that meets the standards. So, that's something that you will undoubtedly, well, the superintendent will see in my budget proposal come up a month from now. One of the things that came out of a conversation with the superintendent this summer is trying to look thing, at things in a longer way. I'm calling it a five-year planning effort as it unfolds. And I've been working with Aaron in the last few days on this. I think as the budget took a downturn in 2008, '09, as this board knows, something happened with the budget process from a principal perspective. And I was talking with Matt about it this summer, that I felt like we, we knew that budget times were tough. And I felt like we stopped expressing what our needs were. Because we knew the answer was likely going to be no when those couple of years after the economy went south. And so, we were told, "Keep it sparse." But there's something about the budget process where you're talking about your vision for the school that I think is really healthy. And so, through a summer conversation with Matt, I said, "We have to find some way to get back to that." So that I can say, "There are things that I understand I can't put into the 2015, '16 budget because they won't all fit and the board can't support them and the town can't support them. But we should be talking about some things that need improvement over a longer time, including things like technology, some things, you know, I've been on a very slow replacement of 45-year-old furniture in Simsbury High School. We, you know, that's stuff that we should not have. It's things like that around equipment that is a little outdated. Around, at the time, before the, the change in our process, we had a very nice five-year textbook cycle. We haven't done it that way again. And we need to get back to it. So, that's one of the ways that I'm appro, I have, my Thursday agenda with my department supervisors is talking about getting back toward that kind of visioning process and saying, "What are our needs?" And stop thinking about it as a one-year thing. And let's look at it longer term so that each year, we don't feel like we're starting from scratch with a budget process. And I'm excited about unfolding that work and wanted to at least preview it for you here tonight. One of the other things you'll be hearing about in two weeks is you're going to get a report about athletics from Dane Street. I'll be here again in a supporting role, won't do as much talking two weeks from now. But some of that is a budget implication around athletics and where we stand in comparison to other districts with things like pay to participate and how we're funding athletics. And I think it'll be an interesting conversation. So, the big finish here, the concluding slide, as I said to our faculty, I've never seen more affirming achievement results. And we certainly went through that tonight. The improvement agenda is steady progress and mostly excited about the budget process because I think it will allow us to really express what I started with, which is what those core, what makes Simsbury High School special. And it's about keeping an eye on the academic preparation at all times, but allowing kids those opportunities to find their passions, their passions, at the same time that we're paying attention to all the character programs and other leadership opportunities that we're giving kids. So, certainly, thank you for your time. I like coming here every October. So, I probably took more time than you wanted, but-
No, thank you.
Great report, by the way.
Thank you.
The written report as well was, was really good to take a look at. Questions for Neil? You know, I have one. The second year of the teacher evaluation.
Yeah.
And I know part of what we're trying to get a sense of is, is the return on the investment of time that is put into it. So, just, A, what's your sense of that right now? And I would be interested in what you feel the teachers are saying about it-
Right.
-at this point in terms of adding value for them.
I think they appreciate the time that goes into the conversations. I've certainly had a number of teachers that say to me, "This, I've been in this for 30 years. This is the most thorough." Having three opportunities to sit down for, we do a 40-minute conference at the high school, having that opportunity three times a year, they're appreciative of that. And they feel therefore that you've added that value to the evaluation system in a conversational way. I think they would say that at the end of the day, the rating piece of it is not adding a whole lot of value. I think we made, the goal piece of it was hard for high school students. I've learned, I've talked a lot with Scott Baker about this. Elementary teachers approach it in a very different way. They see that growth of their third-grade students over the course of a year. And I get them at this reading level and this math level, and I'm trying to grow them a year. And high school students who have their social studies students for one period a day, they have certain skills and content they want to, but they don't see that same kind of growth model that in elementary. So, that was hard. Our, our goals in year one were not as sharp as they were in year two. So, we actually borrowed some of the way that elementary teachers looked at their data and presented the data to high school teachers in a different way. And actually kind of highlighted for them, students who are already achieving, doing great through 10, let's say you're an 11th grade teacher, we can show them, "Here's the kids that did great based on a couple of key 10th grade metrics. And you should set a reasonable, reasonable goal for them expecting that they'll do well in 11th grade. But here are some kids that we could show you that struggled with some key metrics in 10th grade. And let's make a smarter goal that targets those kids." That was not, that, that was more fine work than we had done before. That, that was going on very robustly at the elementary level.
Right.
So, I think our, our feedback about our goals this year was certainly, and we've just set them now. We haven't now gone through the next part of it. But I thought they found, they, there was kind of a, "Oh, that makes more sense by looking at it that way this year." Overall, I will still say, it is a tremendous amount of time. And what I worry about with it in the long-term, my conferences, I may, I may just have to think about scheduling a little bit, but we do them in three weeks. And we say, department super, and I talked about the secretary, schedule them. A lot of the other work that I would want to be attending to in the school for those three weeks goes back burner.
Sure.
And that makes me nervous in terms of like a sustained, you know, I don't get things off my to-do list. And that doesn't feel good a lot of times from the principal's perspective.
And we've talked a lot about it, you know, the shared value of these conversations. So, the added benefit is the same thing that's becoming the largest challenge for building leaders. And what we can do over time, maybe from a differentiated approach, we've started to have, you know, what is our flexibility within the mandate to really look at some of those things different, to adjust that load is, I think, really important to our leadership-
Yeah.
...over the course of the time. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Really appreciate it.
All right, our next informational report is the quarterly budget analysis. Burke, and we have an exhibit that also was provided to us.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
This is going to be very, very short and sweet and not nearly as much interesting data as the last report was just presented. Thanks a lot, Matt, for that placement on the agenda. Good night, all. Regarding revenues, we're really looking at no, no real concerns. We're on, on target for state education grants that go to the town. In terms of state and federal awards, we, at this time of year, we always have a few that are not finalized. In regard to tuition, we have two fewer students than we estimated coming from other communities paying tuition. This is actually a follow-up to a question that one of the board members asked at, at your last meeting. So, while we're right on target with the, the number of choice students at 146, we essentially have 147 students that are essentially receiving some sort of tuition for. And we will continue to obviously monitor the state budget process as that gets underway. In terms of accounts that we're highlighting, out of the 75 major accounts, very few at this point that we're, that we're really concerned about variance. This is the second year of our modular replacement program. So, for the Latimer Lane replacement, we, we did expect and estimate some utility savings from that. And we see that being a projected surplus. The cost of our, one-time cost to remove the modulars, we, we see some deficit in that account. And then on our unemployment insurance, we see a little bit of a surplus there. On page two of the summary, you see the standard data comparing year over year. We see a decrease in the total number of FTE. And we've broken out those major categories, down a little over five FTE from the previous year enrollment. You just heard about that at your last meeting. And we're right on target with the projected enrollment K-12. In regard to the major categories at the center of this report, as you may recall, it's, it's difficult when we're dividing it and assuming that there's four even quarters after this first quarter. We're not really seeing, school hasn't been in session July and August in a substantial way. So, it's not surprising that, you know, we've not incurred in instruction nearly what, what, what would be expected if it was four even, even quarters. So, there's really no areas of significant concern. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Fancy graphics for this report.
I think so. Some rockets or something.
Some noises. There you go.
Or bouncy lines or something.
Thank you.
No style, all substance.
I like the substance.
All right, any other, that take care of it? Okay. So, Burke, the six-year capital improvement plan?
Right. So, in, in, in starting the process, each, each year, we simply do this roll, roll-forward draft to give you an opportunity to see that if nothing else changed, what, what would the presumed projects be in the first year? And it's only the first year that we are actually asking for approval. And that would be the 15, '16 year. But there are a number of projects that were estimated to be in this, in this year. Some district network infrastructure spending, high school tennis court replacement, some window replacement at various schools, some improvements to climate control, specifically cooling district-wide, and central school roof replacement. So, those were all planned to be, estimated to be needed in this year one of a, of a six-year plan. We also have some, some other projects that have been placed in further years, largest of those being the bulk of the Henry James renovation, the remaining portions of the library media center, science classrooms, and actually the, the fire suppression system. There's a typo, I think, on your sheet that we've obviously done the office in the first, the first phase. And then secondly, the Latimer Lane renovation project, several, several years out further. Consistent with what Neil spoke about of trying to really improve our multi-year planning efforts, Matt, Matt and I have, have met about the need to, you know, whether it's the, the first year, the funding year, or those future years, try to update and really review the scope of all of these projects. And we are in the process of doing that with engineers and architects. And we'll be bringing back to you in coming months, updated recommendations and estimates of cost, updated recommendations about priorities and scope of each of these projects. Preliminary comment, I think that I would make about what's in the first year of this list is that the window replacement is probably the, the project that I think is least critical and I would estimate would be looking different the next time you see it. One of the thoughts is that one-third of the, of the, or one of the three schools that was targeted for window replacement was Latimer Lane. And I think it makes a lot more sense to look at that as we're looking at the overall Latimer Lane project in future years, just like we have the Latimer Lane boiler out there in, in those future years. From the climate control point of view, that's an area of particular concern and effort. And we're going to be moving forward with a, a more detailed review in all seven schools than we've ever done. Not, not with the focus of can we air-condition the entire school. We don't have funding realistically to do that in seven schools, but to really make some progress in, in cooling major portions of those buildings. So, I, I would certainly expect that, that number, which, which has been carried forward here in past years, not for air conditioning, but more cooling and fans and movement will, will, will be more realistic, but would be a higher number. And the central school roof, we're going to update that number. That's been, that's been pushed out for several years. This may be a year that we do have to plan, plan for that rubber membrane roof. So, that's a quick overview. I'm open to questions and, and other comments that board members might have about this process. It's a long process. As you may recall, by the charter, it has to be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen in mid-February for the, you know, this, its place in an overall larger town capital improvement process.
Any questions?
Not at this point in time.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll be back.
Thank you for keeping us informed.
So, we are on to our second public audience, if anyone wants to speak. Not hearing anyone. Our future business is our next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, November 12th. With that, a motion to end the meeting?
Sure. So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.